Trustee Lewis.
On behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, no, 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 excuse me. Chair Walker, this concludes the Finance and Budget Committee report.
Thank you so much, Trustee Lewis. We appreciate you and look forward to working with you in your new role. Clearly, it's been a deep dive today in these subcommittee reports. So thank you for plowing through that as best as you could. We all got wires crossed now. So thank you for the work that you guys have done. A lot of heavy lifting there. Thank you so much.
Be sure and pray for me, please.
I shall do it. Absolutely.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, but I'm getting text messages that there's no sound. Can we just, do you mind if we take a moment just try to fix that? There's no one can hear. I'm getting more texts after texts after texts because the sound is not working.
Yeah, I just, I just texted Tim Warren.
I did too. I just want to give us a moment so that...
Okay, very well. We'll pause and let us know when we can proceed.
I apologize.
No problem.
I'm texting Tim now, too. He said he just fixed it. That's, Chairman Walker, he said he just fixed it.
Very well. We apologize for the technical difficulties for those of you that have been watching without sound. Yeah, thank you for joining us once again. We're now moving into our next item on the agenda, which is the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Report. The Chair recognizes academic and a Student Affairs Committee Chair, Trustee Morton, to report out the action items and other items from today's Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting. Trustee Morton.
Thank you, Chair Walker. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee met today to consider and vote on three agenda items and to receive reports on four other agenda items. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the September 24th, 2020 committee meeting minutes, approval of an academic program modification, the discontinuance of the Bachelor of Science degree completion in dental hygiene, and the approval of the Title IX emergency rule. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also received reports on COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic academic and student issues, SACS accreditation review matters, academic affairs and student affairs. As I stated earlier, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of the September 24th, 2020 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in board materials for the November 19th, 2020 board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the September 24th, 2020 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in board materials for the November 19th, 2020 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Inter discussion. Here we now the questions on the motion to approve the minutes of September 24th, 2020 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in board materials for November 19th, 2020 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Corville.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Sekman.
Aye.
My motion is approved. Trustee Martin. You are mute.
Sorry. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of an academic program modification, the discontinuance of the Bachelor of Science degree completion in dental hygiene. Information pertaining to this agenda item is contained in board materials for the November 19th, 2020 board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve an academic program modification, the discontinuance of the Bachelor of Science degree completion in dental hygiene as contained in board materials for the November 19th, 2020 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Inter discussion. Here we now the questions on the motion to approve the academic program modification as continued of the Bachelor of Science degree completion in dental hygiene as contained in the board materials for the November 19th, 2020 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Corville.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Sekman.
Aye.
If the motion is approved, Trustee Martin.
Finally, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the Title IX emergency rule. The information pertaining to this agenda item is contained in board materials for the November 19th, 2020 board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve the Title IX emergency rule as contained in board materials for the November 19th, 2020 board meeting and grant the President the authority to make any appropriate technical or legal changes, including changes required through the state approval process.
May I use a second?
Second.
Inter discussion. Here we now the questions on the motion to approve the Title IX emergency rules contained in the board materials for the November 19th, 2020 board meeting and grant the President the authority to make any appropriate technical or legal changes, including changes required through the state approval process. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Corville.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie. Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Sekman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Chair Walker, that concludes the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Morton, and other members of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee for your great work on behalf of the board. Next item on the agenda is the Executive Committee Report. As Chair of the Board and Chair of the Executive Committee, I will report the actions and information items of today's Executive Committee meeting. The Executive Committee meeting, the Executive Committee met today to discuss and vote on specific...
Hi, let me see if I can get some of them, okay?
To vote on specified committee agenda items, the committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the September 24th, 2020 Executive Committee meetings. The Executive Committee also heard an update from Vice Chair Cole, the President's annual performance review, and a report from Secretary Pendleton. To state it, the Executive Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of the September 24th, 2020 Executive Committee meetings containing the board materials for the November 19th, 2020 board...
Okay, so just connect calls around, okay?
Vice Chair, you're not on mute. Thank you. On behalf of the Executive Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the September 24th, 2020 Executive Committee meeting as contained in board materials for the November 19th, 2020 board meeting. Is there a second? Second. Inter discussion. Here we now the questions on the motion to approve the minutes of the September 24th, 2020 Executive Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November 19th, 2020 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
Trustee Cole.
Yes.
Trustee Corville.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Sekman.
Aye.
If the motion is approved, this concludes the Executive Committee report. The next item on the agenda is the update on the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic issues affecting TSH students. The Chair recognizes President Glover, who will provide information regarding this agenda item.
Thank you. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Pendleton, would you just go ahead and preside on this?
Okay, this is a matter that our trustee Tannis will be addressing with a, um, a guest speaker for her.
Give your names and your major, your hometown.
Yes ma'am, thank you everyone. Good afternoon. I am Tiara Thomas, a junior political science major from Oliver Branch, Mississippi, and I serve as the student trustee for this academic school year. I understand that your board materials do state that this is a report on the issues affecting students because of COVID-19. However, I want to speak on the resilience of student life and experiences despite COVID-19. Tennessee State University is arguably one of the most, the top universities in this country for maintaining safety during the COVID-19 pandemic. We, as a campus community, are learning and overcoming together to ensure a safe and successful semester. I owe much of my success and my opportunities to the Miss Tennessee State University. Academically, I was blessed with dedicated and attentive professors who did not let the virtual space stop them from educating and elevating us to the next level. My professors asked us personally what we needed to be successful and implemented those exact accommodations. But if a student was to feel like their virtual experience was beginning, beginning to be ineffective, Dr. Harris and his team in Academic Affairs worked to create a safe space in our eLearn platform to make sure those concerns were heard. Socially, my semester has been nothing short of amazing. Our Office of Student Affairs has not missed a beat with programming. Although it was virtual, it was very creative and engaging. We were able to hold virtual homecoming seminars and dedicate much of the semester to civic engagement, where events were held where over 200 students were registered to vote and over 100 students were able to mail off their absentee ballots on campus for the 2020 election. Personally, despite COVID-19, I was able to participate as a member in the aristocratic bands, be crowned as Miss Phi Beta Sigma for the 2020, 2021 academic school year, and to become a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, while, all while maintaining a 4.0 this semester. It would be impossible, it would be impossible to be successful if we as students did not feel safe. I have had the opportunity to be tested in our health center for COVID-19 once a week throughout the semester. TSU is very grateful to have nurses in our health centers such as Nurse Dana, um, this year who makes our health and comfortability with testing a priority. With the help of Student Affairs, the band was able to continue aggressive measures, were able to continue with aggressive measures in place along with other large organizations on campus. And lastly, any concern regarding my health or the health of my peers were addressed immediately and corrected. I'm very proud of where we are in this 2020 semester and where it has brought us and where the spring semester will take us. Upon arrival this semester, I was moved by how many freshmen and freshman parents believed in Tennessee State University, enough to attend in person this semester. So I think it is appropriate at this time to hear from one of those students, Ms. Jasmine Wall.
And Jasmine, give us your, your full name, your major and hometown.
Good afternoon. I am Jasmine Wall and I'm a freshman here at Tennessee State University from Detroit, Michigan, major in biology.
Good.
I would like to first start off by thanking the university for all that they have done to ensure a safe semester. I'm grateful for all of the positives that have came out of the semester. As a freshman in college, you have to learn how to adapt to the new things. I'm usually great with that skill, but the pandemic made it very difficult this year. Virtual learning was a transition that everyone learned to like. Not only did professors teach students, but the students also taught and helped professors as well. This is a year where everyone was uncomfortable and learned to adapt to the new norm. One big lesson that I learned was that you have to be on top of everything. You have to monitor your work and grades because since everything is virtual, anything can get misplaced or assigned incorrectly. That is why communicating with your professor is important. Some tools that helped me get through this semester was the application TutorMe. TutorMe is an application that is provided through the university. It has tutors online to help students whenever they need to help. I used this tool twice and it truly did help me with my schoolwork. Another thing that I took advantage of was the, the library on campus. With COVID existing and everything closed, I was only able to do my schoolwork in my dorm. But eventually I wasn't being productive anymore, so I went to the library. I'm very appreciative that the library was open because that was a place where I could really focus. The library followed every safety protocol from sanitizing to only allowing so many people in the library at a time. Overall, this was a very interesting, but yet a great academic year for myself. My social experience on the, on the other hand, was very cautious. Social life on any campus is a huge part of the college's experience, but many events were canceled to keep people safe. To make up and replace those events, many were held over Zoom. I attended many Zoom events from Tiger Stay Out to Women Biology to many more, but my favorite event was the First Generation Celebration. This event was for a first generation college students to be celebrated for completing their first semester and to continue to motivate us students to work towards our goals. By creating these events virtually, it helped restore some type of social life on campus. While being a student here, I'm also a member of the March Band here. The band seriously used safety protocols that were needed to keep people safe. Our first two weeks of practice were virtual, which was very different. Once we began to meet in person, masks were worn and the six feet distance was strictly used. I thought that being six feet apart in March Band was impossible, but I was completely wrong. It was mandatory for us to get tested twice a week and to sanitize our belongings every day after practice. Through all of the challenges, we still pushed through to have a great season. Even though this semester was not an ideal semester, we continued on and completed it despite the challenges. This semester taught me how to become a flexible person within any situation that happens and that you need to be able to adapt to unexpected things. Thank you for having me and I look forward to next semester.
Mr. Chairman, you and, and board of trustees, you heard from two outstanding students and we're happy to present them to you today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, um, Trustee Thomas, and thank you, Ms. Walls. What an incredible, uh, presentation for both of you all. Certainly, Tennessee State, you all represent everything that Tennessee State believes in and you are truly examples of excellence and, uh, and Trustee Thomas, a full part of all of that, that, we hope that's contagious. Thank you. That is incredible. Next item on our agenda is the President's Report. Uh, the Chair recognizes President Glover, uh, who will provide a report on this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, and to the board of trustees. This is the President's Report, and I want to start by saying I am so pleased to share with you that Fall 2020 is coming to completion and has been a very successful academic year despite the challenge of COVID-19. Just holding two great students and the student, the student population has just had to adjust and they adjusted very well and things were, we managed to all the challenges and so we're just pleased that, that it is ending on a high note like it is. Yes. Next. So we have an agenda. I just want to tell you about our COVID-19 and some of the health and safety protocols associated with it. Up there on SAC C O C, a couple of things on recruitment enrollment, uh, go over the CARES Act and the funding we got in the grants and research and other funding, and then some of our partnerships. As it relates to COVID-19, as you, as you know, classes will end by Thanksgiving. We've made that clear to the parents and students. Approximately 85% of the course delivery is online. We have some on ground that's for the clinicals, the field studies, the X science and some others, but mostly, mostly we are 85% uh, online. Technology devices were provided to approximately 1,000 students and faculty. Now, we did a very aggressive testing for students. Uh, the testing was self-administered. We have a healthcare professional who was assisting collecting and separating for us. The students are complying with the guidance from the healthcare experts. They're wearing face coverings, the gloves where they, where necessary. They're practicing social distancing. We have installed hand sanitizing stations throughout the, the campus. There are some restrictions on social aspects of their lives. They have adjusted to that. Again, back to the face coverings, uh, the mask that requires to be worn at all times on campus in a public place, that's students and faculty and staff. We have social distancing at all times. We have some stickers on campus that's placed throughout the campus to assist with that. When you drive on campus or come on the campus, you have to have a temperature check. I'm there mostly every day. When I leave and come back, I get, I have to get a temperature check each and every time. And we do random checks throughout the campus. And so we encourage students and employees to wash their hands regularly, frequently throughout the day. And if you want to enter office, you'll see we install the plexiglass desk shields just to make sure, uh, we, that was just to assist with the healthcare protocols. Cleaning, we continue to clean the buildings. There are not a lot of students or employees in the building, but we clean them regularly still. The classrooms, the campus facilities, the student apartments, residence halls, we make sure we clean and sanitize them on a very, quite frequent basis. And then we wipe down and clean throughout the other touch points and to disinfect the high, the high touch surface areas and the labs and the public areas between users. So we've got those protocols all through semester. We're going to continue those throughout this semester. Let me go to the SAC C O C update. Uh, our visit is March 22nd through 21st, and we're preparing for that right now, 2021. But it's going to be a virtual visit because they're not, in fact, there's a SAC meeting in December and there's a SAC to get our visits in March. It's all virtual until further notice. To about recruitment enrollment, I'm going to move to that now. This fall, next, this fall, we have 7,617 students to register. There's a headcount of undergraduates of 6,000 students and graduate of 1617, so a total of 7,617. We expected to decline, we expect to be a little more of a decline than that, but we were happy it was that we reached that goal that we did. The good news is that the first year roll was up, with over 1,600 freshmen. That's the highest ever. We made a, had a record this year in this COVID climate with over 1,600 freshmen. But the number of returned students was down, but it wasn't down as much as we had anticipated. And we appreciate how the deans and the faculty and the chairs all just insisted and contacting students and encouraging them to return to TSU. And we saw there's several who were not returning, not registered. The, uh, the deans and the chairs and the faculty was organized and contacted students, they called and emailed. And there, I think it's because of that, that type of, uh, persistence that we got as many students we did to come back. Now, there are some reasons that the students told that they did not come back. And the number one reason, I think I said this before, is that parents lost their jobs. We talked to students and we talked to parents. They said that the number one reason that the students didn't come back was because they couldn't afford to. They lost their job. They were working in opera land and they weren't called back. They were working in numbers. They weren't called back. Some got laid off for two weeks. They became four weeks and they just laid them off permanently. And so the parents lost their job and the students lost their job. There's some working part-time at department stores and at restaurants. When they closed with modified schedules, the students were the first to go. Those were the two major reasons. And then the other reasons were they had some concerns about the safety of COVID-19, especially the growing number of cases in Nashville, Davis and County areas, and I want to return to campus. And of those who did not want to return were unsure about taking classes online. And there's still some, some reservations now, but students have adjusted to it and are doing quite well with it. And then unfortunately, some students just decided to take a gap year due to this COVID-19 and they're planning to come back next year. But you know, we know the literature shows that for our population, uh, takes off a year, they're not as likely to return as other populations. And we worked hard not to have students take that gap year. So as we continue recruitment, we have some markets that we're really going after now, the first year students. We've shown we can be successful recruiting first year students in this, uh, in an online environment. We're making sure we can get better, get a better handle on returning students and contact them a little earlier about returning to TSU. We have some best practices now we can go through and talk to students about returning back to TSU in this, in this climate. Another market is a graduate student, become a graduate student a lot more. We appreciate how the grad school system turned around a lot, so we're going to keep marketing now for more graduate student, a higher enrollment. Another market is community colleges. We have community college plan of action that we're, we're effectuating now. Doing enrollment, then adult learning and non-traditional students, of course, our veterans. So we're about the CARES Act funding. Uh, we, we mentioned before that we've gotten CARES Act funding. I shared some with you before, but it's worth repeating that we continue to be good students of our CARES Act funding because we were seeing what it'd be 14 billion, well, not even 14 billion, 14 billion was made available in emergency funding for universities, for all universities nationwide, both public and private. But that was additional appropriation of 1 billion specifically for HBCUs and other minority serving institutions to just be used for COVID. So we really owe a debt of gratitude to the Congressional Black Caucus for how they went after this and tackled this. We owe a debt of gratitude to, uh, people like Alma, Alma Adams, people like, uh, Marsha Fudge, Kamala, Kamala, um, Harris. They just went after this and made sure that we got the funding, this emergency funding. But we were glad that we had some advocates to make, to push this funding through despite those who tried their best to stop it. And so TSU used the funding primarily for university and student-related expenses, including scholarships and the technology device we mentioned earlier. And so this is some great news. Talk about the partnership with Mahari. I just hope we had a chance to see that. Many of you were on the, the press conference and the Zoom call that we established Levi Watkins Junior Institute and part of Mahari Medical College to create this pipeline for early entry into medical school. Um, this name after Dr. Levi Watkins Junior, a 1966 TSU graduate. And we're just so pleased that the, that the Levi Watkins family has, has contributed, uh, almost a half million dollars to university. There's more that they're contributing. So we really appreciative of the Levi Watkins family and the Starkers Institute. So we have the students who will attend Mahari, uh, through this accelerated program. The way it works is three years of undergraduate study here at TSU and then the least the bachelor degree. There are four years of medical school, or dental school, uh, at Mahari. And to reconsider the student must have a 3.5 minimum GPA and a minimum ACT of 28. And I mentioned earlier about the, how the Congressional Black Caucus had fought for us to get the funding before. So I had been in various meetings with, um, the Vice President-elect Kamala Harris, but we have met with the President-elect Biden about HBCUs. And I have, we had several of those meetings. He met with HBCU presidents and there was Divine Nine. And they have made some commitments to HBCUs. Among those, they paid 70 billion to HBCUs, 20 billion just to help HBCUs and minority serving institutions, just increase their research facilities to, so we can compete with the larger universities and become the research hubs and we can, to try to move from R2 to R1. So the research product, the research component is, is huge to, to set aside $20 billion. And then 10 billion to create some sense of excellence. There are various things that's, 200 is what the number they have thought it, it may be more, maybe less, depending on what can get through the standard. Uh, but it's different than health disparities, globalization, racial differences. So there are various things that they want to set up. And so a lot of us are very key, members of HBCU presidents, including myself, we are very key in these conversations about how this has been used. Then we're asked, they're asking larger universities to subcontract with HBCUs or part of HBCUs. That's part of the, the whole plan of action. They're just trying to dismantle some of the structured, structured racism that has contributed to underfunding of HBCUs. So I've been asked to work with this and we're still, we still, we have to, we helped to develop that, that conversation that resulted in the problems that they made to HBCUs. So I moved to grants and research, notwithstanding the, the CARES Act funding. Here's where we are. We're now at, uh, we're on target to have a record year in grants and research funding. We're right now at 52 million and 74,000 dollars, which is as of, right now, as of November. And the highest, last year we had 55 million, this is 5.2 million, the highest we've ever had. So we, and right now we're three million short of just, of being at that number again this year. So we, we expect us to surpass that. And I want to add that TSU is now the top HBCU and receiving USDA funds and NIFRA. And we've been called the, the HBCU of choice by a couple of areas within the Department of Energy Council. And so we continue to rank in the top five HBCUs that are receiving federal funds. We've established a lot of cooperative partnerships. Alpha, which we already have, they expanded significantly and they're doing some more extensions. They talked to me about it and asked me not to mention it, but they're talking some more significant expansion for- They talked to me about it and asked me not to mention it, but they're talking some more significant expansion, but we're, we're really pleased with. Bank of America, Best Buy, Florox, CoreCivic, uh, this is something, the criminal justice program, CoreCivic, we, we trying to partner with that one. Dollar General, the National Press is the first time an HBCU has ever been, been a part of HBCU. Uh, Stone and Music Group, John and Sher's, Tractor Supply and Chure's Financial, Formers, SunTrust. So we, we were really on the road, beating the bush for this corporate partnership. And these partnerships really mean corporate dollars. And of course, a lot of corporate dollars come, uh, student opportunities for, both for internships and for permanent employment. So, uh, worried about, as we talk about partnerships, we have two athletic partnerships. Uh, Peyton Manning, uh, Foundation, this work by new FED director, Dr. Mika Allen, to establish scholarship. And then we have, um, Robert Covington Foundation, who was on campus last week, uh, who is an alum, who plays with the Houston Rockets. Well, for now, maybe the Blazers right about the Houston Rockets right now. And he's planning the a million dollar plus sports pavilion. He came to make that announcement on campus last week. And so we're just pleased with how the partnerships are going, the corporate partnerships and the foundations. And so I want to, on that positive note, and I thank you all very much. Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you so much, um, Madam President. We certainly appreciate your report. Of course, we are, uh, certainly, uh, grateful for, uh, the progress and things that we are, uh, partnerships in particular, TSU is undertaking and of course, we appreciate you, uh, material report. I do want to just suggest, I want to thank this board once again. And, uh, I do want to, uh, appreciate, uh, each one of you, uh, as we, um, continue to move forward and move this university forward. Uh, as the board, we, we truly, uh, uh, have taken on this very seriously. And I think, I'm very thankful for, uh, the board, uh, addressing the things that need to be addressed. And of course, my comments are more so in the resolution you heard earlier. So to that point, it speaks to the board's, uh, uh, seriousness and, and commitment to, uh, seeing Tennessee State continue to thrive. So thank each one of you, uh, this amazing board and we look forward to working together in the future. Uh, is there any additional business before us? All right, if there's no additional business, then I will adjourn the motion to adjourn the meeting. I move. The second?
Not second.
Chair Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
Trustee Cole. Oh, actually, Trustee Corville.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee McKenzie.
Yes.
Trustee Sekman.
Yes.
Right? Motion is approved. We are adjourned. Thanks all of you so much for joining us. Have a great, have a great week.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, another one on the books. You're muted.
Are we okay?
We are okay. We are okay. I will, uh, stop the.